All right, I would like to welcome you to the Finance Committee of the Georgetown Divide Public Utility District Board of Directors for Thursday, December seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. I will call this meeting to order. Uh, are we, we're recording? Did I hear that? Folks are online. Uh, with that called to order, let's stand and uh. Martha, can I ask you to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Uh, do I have a motion or discussion about today's agenda to be adopted?
Initial roll, a quick roll call, so we know who's in attendance for committee members.
Uh, remember Miller?
Here.
Uh, remember Hillig?
Here.
Uh, remember Gorance Junior? Let the record show he is absent today. Uh, remember Fisher?
Present.
And liaison Stovall? You know, who's getting over something. And liaison McDonald.
Present.
Alright.
We have three, four. Uh, the two people are investment people and Shari and Alex is in the statue.
Well, moving on then to item two, do we have a motion for adoption of today's agenda?
I make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is adopted. That moves us to item number three, public forum. So anyone that has anything to speak about today that is not on the agenda, uh, have an opportunity to speak from the public. We'll start with folks in the room and then if anybody is online. No one from the room? Anybody online have anything to say in public comment today?
No one has raised their hand, gentlemen.
Shari, nothing? Okay, very good. Let's move on then to approval of minutes. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at the meeting minutes from September twenty-eighth? Do we have a motion for approval of those minutes?
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes from September twenty-eighth.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes from September twenty-eighth are approved. Moving on to page two, already. You know, we are going to try to be thrifty with our time today. We got all kinds of things going on, sports and holiday events and things like that, so. Try to pass along a robust amount of information as quick as we can and get on to other things. So with that, I would turn to our general manager for our informational items.
So, uh, how open it up to any questions that the committee may have on the financial reports, uh, moving forward?
I have one quick question on the budget report. Looking at page one of nine of the budget report, this is underwater fund one hundred. So looking at items that are in negative being revenue and items in positive that are, uh, that are expense. I just noticed the sale of assets that had an item there for eighteen thousand five hundred dollars is showing positive, but is that revenue received from sale of assets or is that the expense to the department to, to sell them?
Give me a second. Page.
Um, so it's page one of nine of the budget report. I'm just curious if that was the cost that the district occurs to sell those things, or if that's the revenue brought in for selling them?
I did email you back.
Yeah.
So when we put the budget in, we're budgeting for revenue. This is what we expect to receive in revenue.
Okay.
So when you see that variance amount through the negative, that's the revenue we have not received yet.
Okay.
And then when you see sale of assets and grant proceeds, we didn't budget for that, so everything's a positive.
Okay. So you're expecting to receive that much this year, but not yet.
And eighteen thousand is a carryover, I believe, from last year's, um, surplus sales. Well, I guess this year's surplus sales. And a thousand dollars in grant funding that we received from Aqua, Aqua J P A.
If you want a carryover, it's what we said.
I, 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 I'm thinking it's almost the end of the year. Uh, my brain is other places and I apologize. Uh, so, so the eighteen thousand five hundred is the leftovers from a surplus account that we have developed through the year, through the fiscal year. We've sold, uh, some trucks, some equipment, pumps, various, uh, surplus items. Those have, we, we generated about a hundred thousand dollars in sales and went out and bought some other equipment and some other, uh, uh, pieces, some trucks and stuff like that. So this is the leftovers of that account. And then the thousand dollars was a wellness grant that we received from J P A to install a water filling station in the, uh, garage, in the shop area.
I went to treatment.
Oh, sorry, excuse me, you're at treatment line.
Okay, thank you. I was curious. Go ahead.
I don't have any.
I didn't have any either.
Alright. Make your head go right into the next.
Yeah, I don't see any other hand raised or comments. Uh, you'll notice, and I apologize to the public, um, if you look online, they're a late addition to the packet. It is a grant update. Um, this was actually presented yesterday, uh, to the grants committee. I developed this on Monday, and that's why it was a late addition because we were getting signed off on it from the grants committee. Um, so what we did was we broke down all of the funding that we've gotten. We are submitted for. We have the possibility to get in the future projects that we're looking at grant funding for. So the three grants on the top, you can see we've, we've received the U S Bureau grant for eighty thousand dollars. This is a grant that we applied for prior to my joint in the district. Uh, then we received the Cal Fire Grant and the state appropriation. Now, let me caveat by saying we've received, uh, because it does cause some concern throughout the community. These are projects that are reimbursed projects, so we spend the money and then we get grant money back. So we don't get a check, you know, for this money and then it goes into our account and then we spend and do the project. These are, these are letters that we received to say, you're in the system, you have this money, it's promised to you, now go do the work. And so that's where we're at. We have, we have, we're going to do the work on all these, and that's for all of them, Bureau, Cal Fire and the state appropriation. We are in the same boat with all of those grant programs. Uh, now to move to the next box for grant funding that we've submitted, we have submitted for the H M P G grant, that is for our, uh, mitigation work from the fire. And we have submitted for the federal appropriation. Now, the, there is a small update on the federal appropriation. I'm not sure if I gave it the last finance meeting because I think two meetings ago, we have not had this yet. This appropriation has made it out of the House. It has been voted on by the House of Representatives. Is it now with the Senate? And unfortunately, it's not been voted on by the Senate, so it's still not in the awarded category until it gets signed by the president. So I, I, we're, we're, we're like at the fifty percent level. We're like out of the starting blocks. We're, we're coming into the finish, but we're not quite there yet. And if you pay attention to the news, you can see as to why, because nothing is really getting done in Washington right now. Now, this is where we get a little bit more information. Um, Shari, I can see your hand go up. I want to make sure that you, you asked your question, so go ahead, please.
Shari, are you there to unmute and ask your question or make a comment?
There you go.
Okay, there I, I can't locate in the packet, the updated packet where this grant information is. Does Elizabeth know where she put it?
On the website, it's, uh, the very bottom of the, uh, meeting notice. It's, it's the, you click on the meeting and then it's the very bottom part. It says G D P U D grant update.
Right, but it's on the same, it's on the same line as the meeting packet and I click on it and I just get the meeting packet.
No, no, it's on the line below. You had to refresh your page.
Oh, okay. Well, it does say updated, uh, twelve-four.
That was Monday for the financial reports.
So there's another.
There's a third bullet. If you find the third bullet, that's what we're, 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 we're talking about.
Alright, I find it now. Thanks. I got it.
Thank you. So the next box is, um, funding opportunities that we're looking at. Um, so we have the brick, which is building resilient infrastructure in communities. This is another FEMA grant. So some of the projects that we have that we've identified for this is, um, there is a potential for a building a second reservoir, and this is where some of that money could come from. Uh, next, we would have the USDA Rural Development Disaster Grant Assistance. So there's a nineteen point four million dollars available in this. There is, uh, at this time, no district match for that, and then we've identified upper canal piping to do this. So the H M P G grant is also for upper canal piping, but one is two mile, two and a half miles worth and one is another two miles worth, and that would get the whole upper canal area piped, so we wouldn't have as many erosion issues and we would have less. So we are, we're, we're hoping that we can get that money as well. The U S B R Water Energy Efficiency Grant is, this is kind of a, a, a little bit different one. There's three different funding mechanisms. There's a, a million dollar, a two million dollar and a five million dollar, but they all require a fifty percent match. So, but what we can do is we can take state funding, if we can match up a project that is state funded with this federal funding to make it still zero match. So that is what I have done in the past, and that's what I would like to do with this money. So we're trying to identify a project right now that would fit under that and what the requisite state grant would be to apply for as well. So, um, number one project we've identified is the hydro at Stumpy for this because it does fit within that project scope. There is also canal lining and canal piping, so. Uh, my goal for the district is if we can get that hydro in up there, then we can utilize that to generate revenue for the district, so it's a win-win. Uh, we get money to pay for the hydro and we get money from power generation from the hydro. That's why I have put that as my number one priority. Lastly is, uh, the J P I Risk Control Grant. This is actually something we just learned at, at the conference. Unfortunately, we missed the deadline for the year, but this is something that we're going to continue to look at, and what this does is offers up to ten thousand dollars for a variety of different projects. So, uh, safety, uh, better, uh, work environment, uh, in, uh, in inspection of infrastructure. So a couple of the projects that we've identified is we are building safety walkways on our, uh, diversion structures. And so this could help us to do that. And the other project is the tunnel inspection that we are trying to do. We haven't had found anybody to do it, but when we find somebody who wants to ride through our tunnel on a little toboggan, um, we can use some of the money to pay for that work, so that, because that's an infrastructure inspection. Uh, other projects that were, were kind of highlighted with this were bloom, uh, inspections, uh, uh, tank inspections. So there's any number of things that you can use this money for, but those are kind of some of the ones that we have identified that we'd like to utilize this money for. Unfortunately, like I said, we're, we're like right after the deadline. It was December first and we learned about it on November thirtieth, and unfortunately, we just couldn't put together something in that sort of time span, so.
Okay. Um. Nick, I might have missed it, but could you spell out the acronyms A C W A and J P I?
Uh, A C W A is Ameri- um, Association of California Water Agencies. The J P I is Joint Powers Insurance Agency.
Okay.
And so Aqua is a mem- is a group that we are a member of that is about four hundred different water districts throughout the state. Um, and then the J P I is a sub-branch of Aqua that is our insurance carrier. So our liability insurance, they do our health insurance, they do our workers' comp insurance, they do all of our insurance.
Um, and I'm, I'm the voting director, so I attend those meetings. So I just got back last week from Indian Wells.
Yes. Or you? It was seventy-five degrees out there and it was actually like, it was nice, but it was awful because I wore a sweater and I couldn't do it anymore. It was, I could see my breath when I got on the airport and I got up and it was like I was burning up. Okay, so some of the projects that we've identified for future funding, uh, obviously the reservoir that I, I mentioned previous, um, so forty million dollars is just kind of a bag in the napkin, very rough estimate. It's gonna be more, could be less. Subby Hydro, again, five million dollars, uh, back of the napkin. Um, automated metering infrastructure. So we are getting some money in the state appropriation to do this, but we're still about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars short, but this is also really easy money to find. Uh, it's, it's water efficiency money, so anytime there's a water efficiency grant, we really have an easy shot. They love A M I, they love, you know, this metering stuff. They love, you know, any kind of more data. So those are really easy monies to get, so we're going to try to find somebody to pay for that. Again, converting the, converting the upper country canals to pipeline. So right now, we're looking for another five million dollars and that matches up to that USDA Rural Development Disaster Disaster Grant. Now, again, low lining the low country canals, so we can't really pipe a lot of those areas because we still have raw water customers, so we have to line them. Um, and this is also, again, we can show a benefit of water efficiency because we'll have less infiltration, we'll have less loss. We can be more efficient, we can run water better. So, so we can, we can sell that one very, very easily as a water efficiency project.
Could I just chime in on that idea? You know, everyone in my neighborhood that you, that purchases raw water has to pump because the canal is at the bottom point of our neighborhood. So if there was some consideration, just as you start getting into more detailed design, to pressurize some of that line with irrigation water to save pumping, that would be a boon to some of us. I don't know how prevalent it is all over, but at least to my neighborhood, that would be a big benefit.
It would be advantageous. I think the cost to pressurize our system would be cost prohibitive, but it's definitely in areas we could look at.
If it was, if it was just typed and had head on it, would that be a, just something to look at?
In certain areas, I think it would be okay. In other areas, it would be very difficult. It's something we get, anything is possible. We can look at anything until it becomes cost prohibitive, then we can, we say no. Uh, again, lastly, the last two, uh, North Fork American River Pumping Plant. So this is, uh, at this point, it's a bit of a stranded asset that we have access to, but we don't have it, uh, located down uh, on the North Fork of the American River, uh, very adjacent to where the upper dam was going to be built. So this is a P C W A, a facility that they built in a piece for us, and we have access to take water directly out of the river there. I think the original intent was there had been some developments other besides A L T that were going to go in, in the cool Pilot Hill area. And this was, uh, maybe, uh, uh, something that they could have used to, to supply water. Right now, uh, in my opinion, it's very cost prohibitive to, to complete this project. I think if you're going to pick, say, building a new reservoir or doing this, which they do the same thing, provide new water supply, a new reservoir would be where I would sink my effort and my time because it has multiple benefits, whereas this, you, you have this backup water source, so you have to pay to pump every time you wanted to use it. So it's just, it's, it's kind of a boondoggle at this point, but it's still something I want to make sure that we have on the back burner. Real low simmer. Lastly, we have, uh, the solar project with, this would be something to offset our costs at Sweetwater, and we would also have some here at the main headquarters building. Uh, some of the estimates we received vary, so they're anywhere between a million and five million. I went with the top end just to be safe. Uh, we've talked about floating solar out on our reservoirs. We've talked about putting, you know, rooftop solar. We've talked about putting ground mount solar. So we actually will be receiving a presentation from two different solar companies at the next board meeting. Um, nothing is going to be approved at this point, but it is more informational, so this is just another project that we have for future consideration. So I'd love to open it up to any questions on these projects, these grants, stuff that we've submitted, stuff that we've awarded, anything at this point. And this will be a standing item on the informational report, so you'll see this report as it evolves. It'll be kind of a living document.
You know, if any of the census tracts in this district qualify as, um, disadvantaged communities that.
We're split right down the middle.
Okay.
So Georgetown and the, I guess would be the south side toward Placerville is considered disadvantaged, the, uh, uh, not so much Greenwood, but the cool Pilot Hill area is not considered. So depending on how we develop and how we tell our story for a project, there are certain things that we can do to, to capture that, that type of funding.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
The, uh, yes, um. The monies for the water tank at Sweetwater?
Correct.
Yeah, um, when I heard this brought up prior, uh, prior, that amount of money will build such and such size of storage tank. And when you mentioned it, it was, uh, it, it seemed as though you might have been saying that we won't spend, I get the impression that you wouldn't spend any more money on the tank than the grant would afford, but what is our actual need based on what we feel is necessary, not how much can we get? And, because we may just add two hundred and fifty thousand more dollars and get, in that, in other words, add twenty percent more funding and we'll get a fifty percent larger tank. What is our need versus, yeah?
So, um, we have received a few different, um, what they would call engineer estimates for tank sizes that range from seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons all the way up to two million gallons. So my inclination is to present those various tank sizes to the board and the costs of the, of the project and let the board decide which tank size. You know, obviously we'll go over the need and how much this water will help and timeframe and days and hours of, of use and stuff like that, but at that point, the, the board can make the decision as to how big of a tank and how much they want to spend beyond the, uh, the appropriation. Now, that's not to say anything we do spend beyond the appropriation, we can't go out and find additional money for. Again, we can find state money always to offset federal money. You can't do federal and money and federal at the same project, but you can do state and federal, and you can even do state and state and federal, just not federal, federal, and you just can't do, it may make sense.
Oh, yeah.
So you could do one fed in as many states as you want, take grants, but you can, you, that's, so that's, that's how we, we've always, I've always tried to work is to ensure that we're, we're having as low district match as possible.
I believe the finance committee would be be able to provide good input regarding the need, uh, communities need far as, uh, yeah.
Sure, I, I think.
Backup storage.
Like I said, I want to continue to, to develop this sheet and, and I think it'll come back, so I would love for the finance committees to answer, because the more, uh, heads we have in the right, uh, going in the right direction, I think, uh, is advantageous, and if the finance committee must sign up on a project before it goes to the board, I think that would be equally helpful.
And I like this matrix you did. It's very helpful. When I spoke at Kylie's Town Hall, I thanked him for money that we didn't get yet.
That's okay. He's done a lot for helping us, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, I gave the impression maybe that we got something we didn't actually have in, in the bank.
It's in the bank, so to speak. It's just, we have to wait for the process to fulfill itself.
Yeah, he wanted me to share the, with the community, how well he's doing supporting it.
I think we should support Mr. Kylie as much as we possibly can. He's been great for us.
Yes.
And I can't take full, uh, 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 credit on this, uh, Director Saunders was the original developer of it and, uh, Ms. Olson was the beautifier. I was, I was just the information.
Yes, nice.
I was providing the information, so I take credit only in the, only in the words that are on the picture.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would vouch for his, I, you know, I've had some experience with him in other realms of, uh, working with, for, uh, supporting fire risk reduction, uh, for us. Who really does have his mind in the rural areas, and we appreciate that. So shout out to our new congressman.
For being a freshman congressman, I would say he is, he is not, you know.
Uh, any other comments, any hands raised? This is the last chance for the informational items before we move into action items. Seeing none. Our next action item, number six, received optimized investment partners' investment report. This is an action item with the potential acceptance by uh, our commission, our committee on, uh, the investment report. I don't know if staff wants to introduce it or go right to our investment consultant, but I'll turn it over to you.
I'd be happy to introduce, uh, Mr. David Bilby, and I will apologize to the committee. This was to be presented at the last finance committee before the board meeting, and unfortunately, we were quorumless, so, um, you're receiving it slightly after the board received it, so please, uh, do accept my apologies on, on having information not be able to submit to the board. But Mr. Bilby, please take it away. I'd love for you to go over our investments and the successes that we've had.
Did the board take action on?
I just do accept, same as this.
Okay.
Good afternoon, committee members and staff. Um, I believe we're waiting on a PowerPoint to get brought up. Yep, I can see it loading up now. Um, so we'll keep it very short and sweet and happy to answer any questions, um, about the item as we move forward, but essentially, when we were hired and brought in as an investment advisor, um, our fo- focus was to help the district get as much revenue as possible while reducing the risk in the portfolio and ensuring liquidity for ongoing operations and capital projects. We had a very successful, um, investment period in July of two thousand and twenty-three is when we invested the vast majority of the district's funds in a laddered approach over a five-year timeframe. So we do that so that we ensure ongoing liquidity in the future as each investment matures. You can see on your screen, uh, looks like that's getting.
Are you able to see it, Mr. Bilby? We have it up on our screen.
I, now I can only see your, um, your drive, like your, your selection of the item, but I can't see the item anymore. Sorry, I can bring it up separately if you want me to. But essentially, what, what we did is we invested in, um, a series of treasuries, agencies and CDs all timed to mature in timeframes that allow for future liquidity and maturity. So you can see on the screen the portfolio maturity distribution. You've got your managed investment portfolio, which is what I just mentioned, the treasuries, the federal agencies and CDs totaling approximately seven point four million dollars in market value and book value seven point five. Those par value, market value and book value, those are, those are just different requirements of the code in terms of how you actually quantify today's value. That's the market value that is affected by interest rates. The book value is the cost that the agency paid for the investments. And because we're intending on holding those investments to maturity, the cost is all that really matters because the yield to maturity on the portfolio is going to be based upon that cost. The par value is how much is going to be paid out on those bonds at maturity. So that's the full principal amount uh, that comes back at maturity plus any accrued interest that comes back. So some of our investments were bought at a discount, meaning below the par value, and that's why the book value is lower than the par value. We also, um, have pooled investments that you can see in the past. The district used Leif as its primary pool instrument, and Leif right now is yielding about three point eight percent. We recommended a different strategy so that we could get a little bit more yield and, and ensure still having sufficient liquidity. So the class fund, we moved about one point two million dollars, um, into that fund, and that fund is earning five point five seven percent. Then you have your checking account and money market account balances and your accrued interest and the trustee held fund separately. So this is all of the components that the government code requires you know, for your quarterly reporting, and we will continue to rep- present this, um, each quarter and put this together for your, 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 uh, committee and for the district board. Um, and if you can go to the next slide, we show you some kind of illustrations on where those dollars are at. So you can see the treasuries, the pie-shaped chart in the upper left, um, shows you where those different investment buckets are. So you're very well diversified in the different types of investments. Remember, these are mostly all federally backed, federally insured, or backed by the F D I C, or they're within, uh, camp, which is collateralized and also invested in federally backed, um, types of investments. Our goal in the portfolio maturity distribution is to have as level as possible on, on that. And so you can see we did a pretty good job on that, and some of it is just an exact timing of within a couple of months, the, the one to two year is going to drop some of that money into the under one year. So that's the timing issue you're seeing there. You actually ended up timing the market really well, even though we really don't speculate at all. We, we based it upon a strategic long-term approach, but you can see your weighted yield to maturity. So that's the entire portfolio. We're estimating that you're going to get about four point eight percent on that portfolio, which is amazing. The rates have dropped, uh, uh, about twenty basis points since then. So you guys are in a really good spot and you, you should continue to, uh, expect, um, rates to either slightly decrease, um, depending upon how the economy does, but we're going to keep an eye on that for you and report back. So you can see some of the statistics and data in the bottom left and how we present, and you can see your interest earnings in the bottom right. So you can see, um, from the prior portfolio structure to the new portfolio structure, interest revenues more than doubled. Uh, that was our goal, and that was what we told the board we thought we could do, um, back earlier this year. Uh, so you can see the immediate impact of investing all those funds in the latter part of July. So it was actually, we did get some interest earnings in July, but you can see August, September, it really jumped up, and so that's where we, we hope to maintain the numbers around that, around that figure, but obviously it's based upon how much we have invested. So if we have lesser more in camp, then that will affect that number a little bit. So that's the entirety of the presentation we gave to the board. We would love to answer any questions the committee has as well.
Do the pooled funds have a similar strategy to the rest of the managed investment portfolio as far as F D I C backed, federally backed?
Yeah, so if you look at, um, on the. Yeah, so if you look at, um, on the camp or, or, or LEAF websites and how they invest the money, the vast majority of their money in camp is invested in short-term treasuries, um, and so that is federally backed. It's also collateralized. They're not leveraging their, their investments. They're not borrowing to invest more. Um, so you've got the benefit of most of the investments are federally backed, and they have a strong liquidity position, cause they only have an average duration in camp of about one month. So you're not having to worry about interest rate risk because it's such a short duration. It comes due, and so they have liquidity happening on a daily basis.
Director McDonald? Yes, thank you. Uh, last time you're able to clarify, uh, some of the things, the questions that I asked of you regarding, uh, risk and safety? If you recall that.
Yeah, I sure do.
Yeah, um, and I just wanna bring up to this committee that some of them, they already know that federally backed FDIC doesn't mean federal. It's no more federal and federal express. And there's only one percent in the, uh, FDIC investment fund backing ninety, the hundred percent of the investments under, uh, management, or, excuse me. There's only one percent of the amount of money on investment that's in the insurance fund to protect the savings. And the Grand Rudden Acts, the Great Recession of two thousand eight and nine, has changed the law so that we'll be no more taxpayer bailouts, there'll be bail-ins. All right, and so with that in mind, I had that question when I went to the conference this week of the California Water Insurance Fund and the, uh, Joint Powers Insurance Authority Fund. And, uh, they weren't completely on uh, in sync with, uh, some of the things I just mentioned to you, but they do have, and they're reducing the amount of certificates of deposits and moving them into treasuries. In part because of that, I was able to learn, because the treasury is that much closer to the digital printing press that the Federal Reserve, which is a federal, would have to go to them through Congress to get funding for. So, uh, I, my only comment is that, uh, I see the certificates of deposit, even though you said, uh, we're talking about some part of collateralization, uh, I, I see one percent, which is down twenty-five percent on those two bank failures, Signature Bank and, and Silicon Valley Bank. They, they reduced the amount in the FDIC, uh, fund to back all the investments under deposit by about twenty-five percent just for two banks, and there's four thousand four hundred eighty-nine banks. So they are in the process of reducing the amount of certificates of deposit in their portfolio. And I just wanted to tell you my, uh, experience speaking with the managers of those funds. Thank you. Let's see, we, we have twenty-nine percent now, that's, that's, that's a big proportion on the bank. So I had.
Are you saying that's at risk?
It's more at risk than the treasury, which would be printing the digital money to pay the insurance when their one percent that backs the hundred percent fails and there's a bank run. And there's more now that aren't being reported by the mainstream media than there were in the Great Recession, and our stock market's only two percent for an all-time high. So you, you look behind the numbers, this is reality, and if there's a bank run, bank failure, uh, it may be covered by the treasury. But if they're not in treasuries, that's one extra step they have to do to get the treasury to print the money so they could pay back the, the depositors, and we would be one as a district, just like a regular customer.
Yeah. And the stockholders of the Federal Reserve and banks, it's all the banks together, they're all in cahoots. And they're the stockholders of, that's why the Federal Reserve is, the Federal Reserve. Yeah. Cause they're, the stockholders of, they're, they're all in together.
Right, and they're not federal. Yeah, nineteen thirteen, yeah, but, but you're correct.
All right, any other comments, questions, any hands raised from the audience? Seeing none? You know, I just wanted to note, you look at the quarterly revenue from interest, eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And of course, you can't guarantee that going on, but that's over three hundred and fifty thousand a year in interest, uh, investment revenue for the district. So that's some real money, and I'd like to congratulate everybody from Director McDonald, who pushed for it, to staff and the board who, who got us into a very good investment strategy, so. Yes. How much will we be taxed on that when it comes to fruition?
No pay taxes.
On, on this, on the investment?
We're a public agent.
Oh, okay. Wow. Very good. So this is an action item. Um, do I have any discussion or a motion to accept our investment report before the quarter ended September thirtieth?
I'll make the motion.
Motion and seconded, all in favor of accepting the investment report for the quarter ended September thirtieth.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The report is seconded by the finance committee. And that's the end of our action items, so to wrap up our meeting for today, any finance committee member, uh, comments or reports? Including our liaison, is anything from the, uh?
I do have one, if, if it pleases the committee. On the agenda, there is a slight typo of the next meeting times. Um, so we will be meeting at three o'clock moving forward on the twenty-fifth. So we moved, aborted, board action moved the meetings to the fourth, and we locked it into the fourth Thursday at three P M. So we don't, we don't flip-flop to the last Thursday anymore. We're locked into the fourth Thursday now.
Will that always be three o'clock or just for this meeting?
I'd like it to always be three o'clock for that. Do you think you can?
I, hopefully, yeah.
And if it becomes a problem, let us know and we can, we can come up with something. And then what we're gonna do is we are gonna look at the calendar and we're gonna propose this specific meeting, cause we have a problem. And we'll make board action, so it's not a special meeting, but we'll have, uh, this locked into probably early December. It's cause of the way November and December with the holidays, we're gonna take those two meetings and permanently combine them into one meeting. So, so instead of meeting twelve times a year, we'll meet eleven times a year.
Okay.
And we had also talked about this committee meeting less frequently right after the beginning of the fiscal year.
Yeah, and so.
There were less decisions to be made, so we can cross that bridge.
If you wanna, um, submit, I can email the committee and you guys can come up and some, with some suggestions. We would be happy to accommodate the committee. I, I think, uh, if you wanna meet six, eight times a year, that'd be.
Okay. Is there a fourth Thursday in February?
The fourth Thursday in February.
Oh, there is.
Yeah, you mean.
There's not a fifth, so the fourth Thursday would be, so the first is the Thursday, second, third, fourth would be the twenty-second. So if, if there wasn't, if, if it wasn't, no, I think it always is, cause there's twenty-eight days, so that means there has to be, there has to be four or seven days. So, uh, if we find one, we'll bridge that gap when we come to it.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I, it, it is, twenty-second is the fourth Thursday. And it's a leap year. It's gonna be a fifth Thursday in February. That's gonna be an interesting one.
Nicholas, uh, any eager Beavers interested that you hear in the committee? Have we, do we, can we throw out a, uh, a, a line every six months at least to?
We have one continuous. Until we receive a full vote, we will continue to.
All right, I'm putting the meeting on my calendar, make sure I don't miss it, but let's not hold up the meeting for that. I'll return to my calendar, so that brings us to, uh, any other, any other finance committee member, committee, uh, comments or reports? Must be none. Uh, moving on to item number eight, agenda items for the next finance committee meeting. Anybody have any requests? Hearing none. I think we've already talked about the next meeting, uh, will be three o'clock rather than three-thirty on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn? I think we do have to do that, right?
Yes, all right.
All third, everybody's in favor?